All righty, let's let me call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, May 27, 2025, being duly assembled. I'd like to ask Councilman Corium Booker, if he would, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation for council. You're welcome to stand if you would like to join us.
(inaudible) To fly in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear and Father God, we thank you for this time we get to share today to conduct your business, the city business, Father. Lord, we ask you just to be amongst us today as we during this budgeting season and just the budgeting process, let us every decision that we make be fair and equitable to all the city residents and in the surrounding community that we get to serve, Father. Lord, we ask you just to continue to cover the city of Greer, continue to cover this council, continue to cover all our staff and everyone that we have the pleasure and honor to serve here in this great, wonderful city. And it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
We thank you for joining us this evening. We have a straightforward meeting tonight. Later on, we'll be getting into first reading of our budget, and we'll be doing that. But other than that, pretty straightforward this evening. So fortunately for me, I'm using the paper agenda tonight. I left my computer at home, so hopefully we'll navigate this expediently this evening. With that then, Ms. Duncan, anybody to appear in public forum?
No, sir.
With that then, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting from May 13, 2025. I'll entertain a motion that those be received.
So moved.
And a second, we have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk this evening? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, as usual, the departmental reports are contained in your packets this evening. I have those in front of you. Administrator and/or department heads will be glad to assist you with questions in that regard. And Mr. Klein joins us this evening for our economic activity update.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Financial performance summary as of month end, April 2025. Starting in our general fund, we had a cash balance of $30,231,000, year-to-date revenues of $45,999,000, year-to-date expenditures of $36,478,000, and a total percentage of 11% under budget. We had a favorable revenue benchmark variance of $4,185,000, a favorable expenditure benchmark variance of $4,825,000, with an overall favorable benchmark variance of $9,011,000. Moving on to hospitality fund, we had a cash balance of $1,163,000, year-to-date revenue of $3,239,000, year-to-date expenditures of $3,080,000. Finally, stormwater fund, we had a cash balance of $3,899,000, year-to-date revenue of $1,621,000, and year-to-date expenditures of $1,618,000. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, we often go months without a petitioner, but we are favored with two this evening. First of which is Lily Kate Barbering. Lily Kate is a Miss Greer High School teen, and she would like to take the opportunity this evening to present her initiative to city council, sharing her goals and discussing how she aims to positively impact our community using her position. The floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you so much. So like Mayor Daner said, my name is Lily Kate Barbering, Miss Greer High School, 2025, and I wanted to talk to y'all today about my community service initiative. It's called Everyday Heroes: Developing an Attitude of Gratitude. So going to Miss South Carolina in June, we have so many opportunities and so many things that we learn. And the three biggest things that we learn is leadership, interview skills, and even speaking skills. But one of the biggest things we learn is service, serving our community. And so my community service initiative is Everyday Heroes: Developing an Attitude of Gratitude. So it's all about recognizing and appreciating the hardworking people we see making a difference in our communities. And it could be like a retail worker, or a drive-through employee, or even a barista at Starbucks, the people that we go unseen, that we don't see most often, we forget, and we forget to think. And so you might be asking yourself, well, like, what is an everyday hero? An everyday hero is someone who does extraordinary things in ordinary situations, somebody that shows kindness and selflessness in their daily lives. So again, it's like those people that we don't see, maybe it's a construction crew on the road. We get mad at them sometimes, but those are the people that are keeping our roads smooth and safe. And so I really wanted to talk about my community service initiative because I think we can do so much good in our community. And so these are some things that we can do to show our gratitude and appreciation. So the first thing is the two simple words, "thank you." Just saying thank you to someone, maybe it's maybe you go to the same restaurant every single Sunday, and you have the same you see the same workers in there, you say thank you to them. Because in this fast-paced world, we forget sometimes. And I've actually designed these thank you cards, and most of y'all have them at your desk now. They say, "To our everyday heroes, thank you." And it basically talks about my community service initiative and why they're being handed this card. And you can keep those for yourselves, or hand them out to one of your everyday heroes. And the second thing to show our gratitude is giving gifts or donations. And I talked about the construction crews on our roads, and there was one day I came home from school, and I saw a construction crew on my road, and I took that opportunity and took the initiative to go to the grocery store, and I brought them back some waters and some just snacks so they don't get dehydrated and things like that. And I gave it to them, and I gave them the thank you cards, and they were so appreciative. And one of them even said, "We don't we don't get this a lot. We don't get this appreciation." And he said, "This is so amazing because we again, we don't get this, and it's so great to feel appreciated and feel that gratitude," you know? And our third thing is taking action. And I always like to do this because we want to become everyday heroes, too. We want to give back to our communities and pay it forward. And one of the biggest things that I've done in my community in Greer, really, is I asked the Bonds Career Center to create blessing boxes. And if you don't know what blessing boxes are, they're kind of like mini pantries. So they have necessities like blankets, food, like, you know, any all the necessities that someone might someone might need if they're struggling with homelessness, or just need a little something to get them through the week. And so that's a huge thing that we can do. We can just stock those up. And so that one is actually, we have one made already, and we're getting one made in the fall. And that one is actually going right in front of the Bonds Career Center at Grace Realty. So it's right in front of the Bonds Career Center and Quali Foods. So if y'all do want to help stock that up, that is getting put up this week as well. So these are just some of the ways that we can give back and pay it forward to our community. And another thing is these QR codes. I also have, most of y'all have these at your desk. And so if you scan this QR code on your phone, it'll take you to a Google form where you can shout out your own everyday hero and tell their story and why they embody the characteristics of everyday heroes. And then I come into play, and I post that on my social media on Wednesdays and Sundays. So you get to see your everyday hero on Instagram and Facebook, which is really great. So these are just some of the ways that we can show our appreciation. So let's celebrate and appreciate the everyday heroes among us, the ones that strengthen our communities. So together, let's inspire others to do the same. Thank you so much for your time. And again, my name is Lily Kate Barbering, Miss Greer High School, 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you coming this evening and sharing your platform, critical to our community. It's we oftentimes see but don't see people in our community, and this is a way to recognize those folks and remind them as well that they are a part of our community. So thank you for that platform.
Of course. Thank you.
We appreciate it. And good luck.
Thank you so much.
The next is a next petitioner is Joshua Nowinski. He has a concern regarding safety and code enforcement regarding a building over on North Line Street in Greer. And sir, the floor is yours this evening.
Counsel members, thank you for allowing me the time to speak. My name is Joshua Nowinski. I live at 102 Harris Street in Greer. I'm here to bring attention to a serious and ongoing issue that has gone unresolved for too long. In July 2023, my wife reported a concern about a property located at 200 North Line Street Extension, Greer. That building is severely dilapidated, potentially filled with asbestos, and has become a nesting site for thousands of bats. Can't overestimate or overestimate the number of bats that live in this building that swarm in and out every night. It's not just a nuisance, it's a public health and safety issue for everybody in the area. We've been told for over a year now that the matter is being worked on. In fact, we've been raising concerns about this property for two years, and nothing has been done. At one point, we were told the reason that the building hasn't been demolished yet is because it is it may be too poisonous to tear down. But if it's too hazardous to demolish, how is it safe to live directly across from it? We've followed the proper steps, we've reported it, we've waited, we've tried being patient. But now we need action. When will this issue finally be addressed? This matter, this is a matter of health, safety, and accountability. We're not asking for anything unreasonable, just for this hazard to be taken seriously and for steps to be taken to protect the people who live near it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We'll have someone from our staff be in contact. I've got nearly three pages of actions that have been taken. It appears that even administratively in court and in other statute authorities, seems to be that we're running into some issues in regards to those, as well as even warrants to work on the building. So it sounds to me like while certainly your concerns are relevant, and it does seem like a long time, sometimes these matters have to work their ways through a system, and that can that can be months and/or even years. But I'll have somebody contact you about where we stand in that process.
Thank you.
Ms. Duncan, do we have Mr. Nowinski's contact information?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Let's move to the administrator's report. Mr. Merriman?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, good evening. Just some reminders, due to the Memorial Day holiday, trash collection is delayed by a day this week. Normal collection resumes Monday, June 2. We do hope that you will join us for Party on Trade to kick off this year's BMW Charity Pro-Am. This is a street festival that will feature live music, vendors, kids' area, and more. Party on Trade is Sunday, June 1, from 11:00 to 3:00. Code enforcement has been busy educating various neighborhood groups about what it is they do and why, and how they can be more engaged and active in policing their community's character and cleanliness. There was a community engagement meeting held in Sunnyside this last Thursday. Our team was there to help neighbors understand codes, how we enforce those codes, and the role that they play in partnering with the city and their neighbors for safer and cleaner neighborhoods. Last week was National Public Works Week. So I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to the hard-working team that helped maintain our streets, parks, and recreation facilities, that makes sure our trash and yard waste is picked up, keeps downtown clean, looking festive in every season, and so many more things that they do that keep our city running that no one sees. So as far as a group that needs thanks, Ms. Barbering, thank you for reminding us of that. But yes, our public works guys are largely and often unsung. But Travis, thank you for what y'all do for the city all the time. The first adaptive pickleball program in the upstate has started in Greer, and upgrades and upgrades to the court at Tryon Park will make the sport even more accessible for players and spectators. This includes new accessible pathways, shade structures, and a dedicated viewing area. The annual Moonlight Movie Series begins June 5 at Greer City Park with a show of Tangled on a brand-new LED screen for better viewing. Activities start at 6:00, and movies begin a little earlier this year at 7:00 p.m. And finally, registration is now open for the Cultural Arts Council's Arts in Action Summer Camp. Kids ages 5 to 11 can explore art, dance, drama, music, clay, and magic during a full day with multidisciplinary camps led by professional artists. Weekly themes include tropical vibes, citrus circus fun, and a science-meets-the-arts adventure. Camp is at the Center for the Arts Monday through Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And for more information, go sign up at greerculturalarts.com. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my administrator's report.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, with that, let's move to boards and commissions. We have two appointments that come before us this evening for action. First is the Greengold Spartanburg International Airport Environs Planning Commission. Mr. Andy Burley's term expires 6/30/2025. I have talked to Mr. Burley, and also the city has had communication with the Greengold Spartanburg International Airport Environs Planning Commission. Mr. Burley is willing to serve, and the Airport's Environs Planning Commission would welcome his service again for another term. I'd ask that somebody on council nominate Mr. Andy Burley, please.
So moved.
And a second. The floor is open for discussion or questions in regard to his service. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
We have an opening on the planning, well, we have a planning commission term that will expire at the end of June 6/30/2025. District 6, Paul Lamb's term will expire. Any additional information in that regard?
Yes, I checked with Paul, and I also checked with Ashley in the planning commission, and Paul would be willing to serve again, and Ashley gave a good report on him. So I'm glad to nominate him.
Comes as a motion to hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion or questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, one item of old business before us this evening, which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 12-2025. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Kaylee Henderson located at 111 Maryland Avenue from suburban neighborhood to traditional neighborhood. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 12-2025?
I do not have any updates, but happy to answer any questions.
Comes as second reading. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion?
We see a lot of the suburban to traditional. Is that because of the UDO that we go in from?
I think that's certainly part of it.
What would it have been zoned under the old?
Most likely either R12 or R15.
And they're wanting to do, what did I read, they're wanting to do is property put?
So there's currently one existing single-family home. They would like to split the lot and put an additional residential unit on that second lot.
And they could have done that under the old regulations without a?
A rezoning.
Right.
That's correct. I believe they want to put a duplex, and so those are allowed by right in traditional neighborhood.
Okay, so we, my point is, we call somebody to have to pay money to go before a board to do something they could have done without that expenditure. Is that correct?
No, under previous zoning, they could not.
They could not?
No, sir.
Okay.
Sorry, no, R12 or suburban neighborhood, they would not have been allowed.
Gotcha, gotcha, thank you.
I apologize.
Questions, comments, discussion? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to items of new business this evening. Our only item of new business is going to be the first reading of ordinance number 13-2025. This is the City of Greer Budget Ordinance, fiscal year 2025-2026. This is an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations there for levying taxes, and to provide for an effective date. At that point, I'm going to stop having read that. Well, let's go ahead. For the purpose of discussion, let's get the floor open. So I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open at this point. I want to jump in at this point. I think it is indicative of the fact that this particular budget has seen more scrutiny than I believe any budget that I've been involved in has had up until this point in my tenure. And if you look around this room tonight, you are going to see the people in here that have spent countless hours working on this budget. I hope you appreciate the new format. I know that it takes a little bit of getting used to, but I think that is going to be insightful and helpful as we move forward. I think you're also going to find that this has been a thorough top-to-bottom kind of process, and again, indicative of the folks that we have with us tonight. And that starts, of course, with Mr. Merriman and our assistant administrators who have worked so closely with those folks that report to them, and to the supervisors that report to them, and to even employees that have been involved in this this process. And I think that's amazing that we've been able to do that in the timeframe that we've had and with the oversight that we have had. And the result of that is a solid budget, regardless of what questions we may have or intent we may have as we move forward through this budget. It is a good budget. It is a solid budget. And while there are things in here that you may question or not, there may be some things that you like, and there may be some that you're not as favorable of. I think if nothing else, the validity of the argument of why it is there has been vetted, and vetted, and vetted. And doesn't mean that we don't hold the privilege of asking for more information and/or changes. That's what this process is about. And with with our first reading this evening, I think it's important to remember that. We will be having a workshop that will follow next week, and then another reading, a second reading. So plenty of time and plenty of space for us to dig in as much as we want. I know we've got a couple of people on the council that enjoy looking through these, and I'm glad that we've got those folks on the on the council. And appreciate their oversight as well, because we bring seven different perspectives to this process. And this is one of those processes where everybody's thoughts are as important as each other's, and again, is an action that we take as counsel. So with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Merriman at this point for oversight of the process, maybe that I wasn't even aware of. But I do know that there has been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears poured out over this document, and that you probably know more about that than I do, but I will give you some time to kind of tee up where we are at this point, and then we will go from there, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anything involving Mike and Katrina is going to involve blood and tears. I don't know which one is responsible for which, and it changes from day to day, but you're absolutely right. As a matter of fact, I think some of our most heated knockdown dragouts are in the budget process. I do want to remind counsel that the budget does start with y'all. It comes off the tail end of the previous fiscal year. We roll into February where council, we kind of do a year-end review update with council on all of our departments, and then we hear, we listen to y'all, and we take your priorities to heart, and we craft a budget around that. We craft a budget around what's needed to continue to operate at the highest level we possibly can and to meet those priorities that council sets out for us in in February. Just by way of just a bit of an overview, we have a, and we can talk about this more at the workshop, but just we have a very thorough process whereby Chris's team begins really early in the fiscal year, but up into the calendar year, looking at where we are on revenue, looking where we are on debt service, looking where we are just from a trend analysis from over month to month. And you get these updates every month where we stand from a budget standpoint. Then our departments sit down, and they come together with their budget requests, and they compile that. It's all uploaded into our system, and then it becomes an advocacy effort. It is it is an opportunity for the departments to come before Chris Klein and Katrina Woodruff and Mike Sell and talk about the budgets in detail, line by line, discuss what that what that looks like, and give justifications for every one of those things, so we then can put a budget together that is balanced, it meets council's priorities. And then it comes to me to go through that budget again to make sure that it to give that final bit of oversight from the staff level, and then we present it to you. I'm proud to present this budget this year. The mayor's right, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into this, and it is a very, very good budget. But it's easy to have a good budget when we have such competent and But it's easy to have a good budget when we have such competent and dedicated staff that manages the budget on a day to day basis. These are from our department heads down to the folks that are, are doing the baseline stuff. They care about how they're using resources. They care about their time and they're, they're dedicated to this city and serving its citizens and businesses the best it can. This, this year, we are again, a very healthy city. We are seeing a eight point four or eight point five three percent increase in the value of a mill. We have had roughly a fifteen percent increase in assessed value this year. Our, our, our general fund budget, and for some of y'all that have been on this council, like we talked about twenty five plus years or a little bit less, our general fund budget, Fund eleven is at fifty nine million dollars. I remember Mr. Dumas said to me, I think, three years ago, that the budget had officially doubled since you started on council and that we are continuing to, to grow and be responsive to the needs of this community. So with a fifty nine million dollar general fund, we've got a Fund ten, which is our capital equipment fund, sits just south of four million dollars. A stormwater fund is at two point five. Local hospitality and accommodations tax is at four point one. So we are, we're growing appropriately and we are growing in a healthy manner and this budget reflects that. The millage rate is, remains at a hundred and thirteen mills in this budget. It assumes no reduction, nor does it assume an increase in millage. We are continuing to make our debt service payments and we have two point zero seven mills dedicated to the city's geo debt. And we remain at five mills for the, the infrastructure and paving fund. Again, many of these, these items and some of this stuff we'll get into a much deeper dive on at our workshop a week from today to give y'all plenty of time throughout the week to scrutinize the budget. Come to us with questions at the workshop and prepare for second final reading on the tenth. Mr. Mayor, staff stands ready to answer any questions if y'all have any for today.
Thank you, sir. And now I want to dovetail real quick on, on something that the administrator brought up. This, this is our, our largest budget that we've, that we've ever produced. While that would seem counterintuitive, this is also, again, to my point earlier, one of the most scrutinized and certainly tightest budget that, that I've worked on or with. And it's due to the fact that as we have grown, it has put position, more people in position to provide the oversight and eyes and ears and perspectives that we need to, to, to make sure that we are in line and where we need to be. And we are, we are exactly there. It also gives us the ability to be more accurate in our, in our day to day operations and also in our future projections. So I think you're going to find that as we continue to grow and our staff grows and our ability to use technology and, and people both, that we will continue to refine this process. Not that there's ever been anything that has been wrong with it in the past. We've done an excellent job to those that have been working on it over the last several decades. They've done, they've done an excellent job, but we are now getting to the point that it is, is, is much science as it is projection. And it's a good place for us to be considering the rate that we are growing. With that, I'm going to open the floor. So floor is yours. Counsel, discussion, questions, comments, whatever.
Well, I, I'll say that I, I do know and I do appreciate Mr. Merriman and, and all the staff, all the work you've done from last year until now because there was a lot of discussion, as there should be, about millage and about what we're doing. And I know that from right out of gate, you guys were working hard to, to provide us what we had asked for. Right now, I don't have that many specific questions, but we have a fifty nine million dollar budget. Thirty five percent is twenty point six. What's our, in our unencumbered?
Our fund balance over the thirty five percent policy?
Yes. Or what, what do we have in there total?
Chris, I think we're thirty, thirty million?
About twenty eight million.
Twenty eight. Yeah, twenty eight million. Okay.
The capital equipment?
Yes, sir.
That would be trucks, cars, tractors, things like that?
That's the lease purchase that we've, we've done every year. Yes, sir.
And I guess this is just a, a comment for the, the future. As, as we move forward, anytime where we, and the, and the mayor alluded to it, where we can use technology to, whether it's mechanization, whether it's just doing calculation, whatever we've got to do that actually reduces the, the number of man hours in the equation and allows us to do more with the same as we move forward. That needs to be, I think, a, a top priority for us. And it, and it may mean that as we go along and we have some departments that rely heavily on manual labor as we start to mechanize. Generally, the requirements for that is you, you, you have to have employees that can handle that mechanization and they require better compensation. So I think that's something that the council will need to address. The department heads will need to address as we move forward. One, one question that, or ask that I do have is that we made a commitment on, on last year to, to always do what we can to try to back down our millage. Do we have? I would like to request, you know, from council, if they agree, that, that we or the administrator and his staff look at the overall budget and try to reduce our millage by as much as two mills. That's a possibility.
I would suggest we all look for that.
On the revenue side, where we have our, let's see, how do we have it listed? Franchise and license. I know that Greer CPW for years, and I know this was, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was a court order, how we got to the franchise agreement number. I would suggest that we need, that we look at that. And if, and I believe it's, it's time to renegotiate or.
Talking about Duke Power and all that?
Well, Duke Powers is not on a, a fixed fee. It, it, it fluctuates, correct?
Mr. Airwood is referring to the settlement agreement between the city and CPW that took place in ninety nine-ish timeframe. And this, and it's listed in the revenue side of the budget under franchise, franchisee and license. It's the million dollar payment that has been provided in the city for those.
What, what is that? Is that under intergovernmental revenue or where would that be?
It would, it would be, if you look at your general fund, if you go to the third page, one, two, actually it would be the fourth page, Fund zero three one six.
Franchise.
It'll say franchise and license budget detail and then under the detail.
I got it.
It'll, it'll show that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
When was the last time that went, that was set at that fee?
It has never changed.
Since it was court ordered.
It was ordered, yes, sir.
And that's been what year?
Nineteen ninety nine, I believe. Am I right? Ninety, ninety eight, ninety nine?
Ninety eight or ninety nine, one or the other. Yeah.
I have no other comments. I appreciate the words.
So noted and, and there had been some discussion between the administrator and I about the timing of that and, and some alternatives. So I, I think it's appropriate that we, that we look at that. Absolutely. Others?
On the revenue side, there's a, there's a pretty significant jump from the twenty twenty three budget to the, to this year's budget. Where does that come from? Is that just an increase in the assessed value of property? Not, not only tax on real estate, but on vehicles and everything else too?
Correct. About five million is coming from property taxes based off a rate and the projected increase in that. Thirteen percent.
It almost seems counterintuitive in some regards about the mill increasing in value, but that, that growth that we have been talking about for, for, for so long, as that mill grows, it actually provides us with higher buyer buying power than it, than it would. So as we see that grow and, and the mill change and grow, it allows us some opportunities that we have not had in the past and will continue to see into the future. You know, we've, we've already talked about the reserve fund and its growth. We, we've, you know, we've mentioned the fact that the, the value of the mill has grown. To Mr. Airwood's point that he would like to see the potential for relief in some of the millage, that is one of the ways that takes place.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know too, how it breaks out since we've had so many new units added to the city. You know, what the breakout is between the new units and then the actual increase in assessed value of existing units? How those two break out? It would be a good trend to track.
And we've not added the impact fees at this point, have we?
No, actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you brought that up. This budget considers no use of the impact fees we've collected since October. And I mentioned that in the budget transmittal letter, but no, it assumes no, no use of those funds. We, I would like personally, I think we need to track those and use them in the budget years to come to offset capital expenses that we know will come. And that's what they're there for. So my recommendation would be we sit on them this year, let them continue to grow so they can have an appreciable impact on future budgets.
And we've got three years to put them in.
Yes, sir.
To spend that money.
Yes, sir.
As, as appropriated.
Yes, sir.
What, do we have any guess on that, on the projections for those?
Right now, we are just south of half a million dollars in collected impact fees between implementation in October and to date. Now, Chris will correct me if I'm wrong, but we are somewhere in that four to five hundred thousand dollar range from revenue impact. And you got to remember, January, February largely not permit driven months. So we're functioning off of four months, four and a half months worth of impact fee revenue. Extrapolate that over, you know, your heaviest months are going to be the summer, which we're, we're in. I think we can probably anticipate a million and a half, almost two million dollars possibly this, this year. Or at least till Oc, from year, from October to October. It's probably not unreasonable. There you go.
Others?
Another county, this is, would be on the revenue side and going over to the expense side. Greenville County has floated the idea about taking revenue back from the cities and school districts and things like that to help pave county roads only. In their upcoming budget, and I know they've, they've said, help, you know, pump the brakes, we're going to push that out. The, the dollars that we normally receive, that's through the county transportation committee. Is that, now, is that, are those dollars?
That is not impacted, no, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
So Greenville County doesn't dictate what the county, okay.
No. Those, those, those gas tax dollars are not controlled the same way that the Felo taxes or Filos would be at the county level. So that's why it wasn't on the.
And that's the way with Spartanburg County as well. They, they just have a diff, two different ways to distribute. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would simply share, you know, agreement with what Mr. Airwood has expressed. You know, going back to last year when we raised our millage, my support for that increase was based on what we were designating those funds for, that millage for, to strengthen pub, things like public safety, public infrastructure here in our downtown for, for coming years. And certainly recreational facilities and opportunities that our, that our residents expect. Full support of that. That being said, I think, I think we can all, I, that, it was a, it was a very deliberative process, you know, that we, that we undertook in raising that. You know, my support again for that was based on those very important priorities and also understanding, you know, that we believe that revenues would be increasing in other ways in future years. We're already seeing that, which I'm very encouraged by. You know, and I have told a number of constituents that, you know, I, I believe our, our responsibility is to not only be extremely careful about raising, doing things like raising millage, but whenever we can, at every opportunity, we can look at how we can actually reduce that, that burden on the taxpayer. And so with the trends that we're already seeing, I would also just echo that request that we look at even this quick after we just raised the millage, to look at reducing that millage, you know, in an incremental way, even at this stage. I think, you know, Mr. Airwood, what you said, up, up to a couple of mills, I think that would be a great start on moving back in the direction that I think we all would like to go in coming years as well. So that would be my thoughts. Value of the mill now is, what is the value?
Two hundred.
Go ahead, Chris.
Two hundred and fifty eight.
Yeah, that represents growth of what do I, eight, eight percent?
Eight, eight, eight and a half percent on the mill. I think we were two eleven last year according to Emma filings and that we did through the four year initiative. So we've seen a, we've seen an increase in the value of our mill.
So if we reduce the millage by two percent, how much would the, the budget be reduced by?
Well, two mills, we would, we would be reducing the budget.
Five, five hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
A little, maybe a little more.
Gotcha. I think when we discussed the budget last year, you know, we had the millage increase. We tried to be as conservative and give ourselves as much flexibility as we needed. And I think now that we are seeing that we do have a little bit of room, I, I look forward to having that discussion next week about trying to reduce the millage as possible. So I appreciate y'all bringing that up and I think when we're in a healthy position, it's a good time to have that conversation.
Yes, sir.
I think it's interesting we find ourselves in this position because mi- millage is used for basically one of two things. It's, it's either to help us when we're behind on our budgeting or to allow us to do the kinds of things that you just mentioned a minute ago. Things that improve quality of life, things that improve the amount of business that can be done downtown. The, the kinds of offerings that we can provide in programming, the, the public safety things that we can identify and move forward with. So, you know, many cities find themselves raising millage simply to fill a deficit. We're in a position where we have raised millage to address the things that we think are important to this community and now have the ability even to roll it back a little bit. Puts us in a position that I think is admirable and is, is foresightful. This is, you know, this is, this is an opportunity that we made clear to our administration last year was that we wanted to get those programs underway for our community. And now we found ourselves in a place where if we're willing to, to make a bit of a sacrifice, may be able to, to accommodate rolling at least a, a, a little bit of, of that back and look to the future to be able to do even more.
As we speak about millage, I've seen a few signs around town that. As we speak about millage, I've seen a few signs around town that proclaim that we, this council, raised taxes 14%. I think the sign whoever put them out, whoever had them made up is somewhat confused, don't understand about millage. We did not raise taxes by 14%. I just, and if anybody has questions about that, I can try to speak to that or I could, we can refer them to the administrator or his staff who would explain to them how millage works.
It's, it's, you know, from a mathematical equation, if your, if your millage is 99 and you, you know, increase it 14, it is a, it is essentially a 14% increase, you know. I think the, the most interesting thing about this is that's one piece of, of a formula that is a three or four-step process in South Carolina.
It's a 14% mill increase, not a tax.
That's right.
And I think what, I think what individual, individuals are finding out now is that millage in some ways is like going shopping for a new car. You, you may, you may know what you want and you may, and you may want to add this to it or subtract this from it or whatever. And, and consequently, the price seems to move around all the time. And I think sometimes with, with our taxes, it's, it's hard to pull out just the piece that is the city's because Spartanburg County and, and Greenville County are the ones that are sending the bill. And so you've got a combination of the two on there. So if you look at your, your millage in Spartan, I mean, in Greenville County where I live, you know, nearly, you know, nearly, what, 300 mills, something like that of total. And, and then you've got on top of that, you could, somebody could have a homestead exemption, a disability exemption. There, there could be an area where you've got an additional fee for a special purpose district. Then you've got Act 388, which essentially cuts your total tax liability in half, all on 4%. And then if you've got 6%, you've got, you know, the transfer on that and relief there. So there's no way for us, it's, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, even with a neighbor in some regards.
Mr. Mayor, while we're on the subject, and you kind of spoke to this, it's, it's important to me to note that we didn't, the, the increase in millage last year wasn't to somehow fund oper, you know, nebulous operational bloat. But again, it was for very specific investment in capital projects. I, I believe in one form or another, in all of our minds, been looked at as a temporary investment, you know, until these other sources of revenue continue to go where we know they're going to go that way. And so, you know, capital expenditure, various specific projects for what I think all of us would agree are very important pieces of infrastructure and services for our community. You know, that's how I've explained it to the constituents I've spoken to over the last year. And I think the vast majority of them understand that and are just waiting for, to see when and how much, you know, for us to take steps to actually make good on what we, you know, what we've said of this being a short-term, you know, solution to make these investments. And so whether it's this year or next year, or whenever it is and to whatever extent, I'm looking forward to maybe resetting some expectations for folks as far as, yes, we, we do indeed intend to roll this back in some form as quickly as possible.
Others? Comments? Further discussion? We will gather next week at 5:30 for our, our workshop. I am sure that there will be some more in-depth questions and more discussion specifically around some of the budget areas. Again, we appreciate all the work that has gone into this. I think that it has been evident that we would like to see an alternative to lowering the millage. And we'll look forward to a scenario or two that we might can consider in that regard. And we'll take that up in, in the, in the workshop. That is, excuse me, I said next week. It's the 10th though, correct?
The week, week from today.
The week from today.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So that, that will happen a week from today.
The third, the 10th is, would be second reading.
Second reading.
Yes, sir.
Second reading's on the 10th.
Third, June 3rd will be.
June 3rd is the workshop.
5:30, yes, sir.
Excuse me. Counsel in public. Let's get that straight. Next Tuesday, the 3rd, we will have a workshop. Then the second reading will be on the, on the 10th. Anything else for the, the good of the group this evening?
Call the question. That's all we're waiting.
Yeah. We've got a, a motion and a second.
Yes.
With that, any further questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we have nothing in executive session. Stand adjourned.